All right. Good evening, everybody. We are back in open session now. So in today's meeting, we have Jared Zager, Boris Lekman, Board of Health Chair, myself, Trevor Matthews, Board of Selectmen Chair, Peter Jankowski, Town Administrator, Luann Souza, Executive Assistant. We also will be having a representative from NSTAR slash EverSource or Verizon for the public hearing to discuss some construction that's going to be happening in town. And then later, we'll hear from Tanya and all to give an update and recommendation for the Board of Health regarding some problematic in town that are not going to follow the regulations. So I think now open the public hearing. Harry, are you here from EverSource, it looks like?
I am, Derek Boris Zager, Supervisor of Rights and Permits. And here with me is Karen Newell, our Community Relations Specialist, and Jessica Elder, our Rights and Permits Specialist. And Jess is going to introduce the petition.
Thank you for joining us, then feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Hi, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. And Jessica Elder from EverSource, thank you so much for having us this evening.
Jessica, I'm having trouble hearing you now. As soon as you started talking, started calling out.
Okay.
You're good now.
Am I good now? So EverSource is supposed to install a proxy.
Not good, not good.
Yeah, the audio is not good. I could go ahead and present the petition, if you like. Is that okay, Jess?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So what we're asking the Board is to approve 160 feet of conduit tying in from some work that we're doing on South Main Street to a utility pole located on Ridge Hill Road. This is part of a reliability project and is designed to provide redundancy in the system so that area residents have an additional resource when one power source goes out. We can switch them to another. So there's a series of these projects that we've been doing across our system. There's just a handful of them, but this was an area that was identified as an area that would be a benefit to the residents in the community. So this is a project that we prioritized. We did meet with members of the administration and talked a little bit about what we were looking to do. And so this piece works with the piece that we're doing on Main Street to solve that reliability problem.
Right, great. So how long will this project be taking place, I guess, on that section of road there, Ridge Hill Road?
Yes, it'll take anywhere between two to five days, depending on the ground conditions, the soil.
Okay, that's quick. So also, I think you guys will have to pull a road opening permit. Has that been done yet?
No, our contractor will do that. Once we get all the permits that we need, which includes this grant allocation. I'm sorry, seems to be a little feedback here.
Yeah, I'm having all kinds of troubles today.
I'm sorry. Oh, that sounds better, actually. So as soon as we get the grant allocation, if the Board approves it, we would hire a contractor. The job is being bid out right now. And then they would go and file the street opening permit.
Okay. All right.
I have, I'm sorry, I have one quick question.
Any questions?
My question is, what was the criteria that caused you to choose our area? You said something about areas of opportunity. Is it tied into something else that we're, you know, we're starting this project in order to work with something else that's going to happen down the road?
Great question. So really what this is about, a little more feedback there, apologize. Really what this is about is identifying areas where we might have, we might be experiencing a high degree of outages more than what we want to see on the system, on the grid. And so we have engineering behind the scenes working to come up with alternative solutions. So this is really, for area residents, it's not a customer sort of, you know, request to, you know, energize a house. It's quite a unique undertaking that the company has done by taking a step back from our regular work and try to solve some reliability problems so that we can make sure that if there is an outage in areas where we're seeing higher degrees of outages than we'd like, we can switch them to an alternative power. And so that's what this is designed to do for the benefit of the residents. Can I answer your question?
And so abutters have been notified, right? So I guess right now, I'll kick it over if anyone in the public is in the waiting room and would like to ask any questions, please digitally raise your hand and Luann will let you in and let you ask a question.
I don't see anyone from the public here on it. We just have Jeff and Tanya and the EverSource folks. So I don't see anyone else on the meeting, actually.
All right. I see Jeff's connecting. Jeff, do you have any questions, or Tanya, or anybody?
I just got on, so I don't know what you talked about.
Okay, EverSource slash project.
That's for the digging of the, from Ridge Hill to Stop and Shop. I don't have any questions on that. I know that those companies, I don't know if they've asked you about bonds or anything, but other than that, I don't really have anything to do with that.
Okay. It was just, it was just interesting timing. You popped on, I thought maybe you had some questions with it. Okay, so I guess, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this project with the condition that all the proper permits are filed and paid for. Jared, do I have that motion?
Yes, I will make, I want to make a motion, thank you.
Make a motion, all right. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lekman Zager?
Yes.
Lekman Matthews?
Yes. All right, I think we're all set here. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good one.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think next might make the most sense for us to go over down to Board of Health, agenda items 17 and 18 for Jeff and Tanya's time, so not to sit through the rest of it. So I guess Jared, I'll kick it over to you. I mean, I think this is just a discussion, so.
Okay, yeah, I honestly don't have much to add to it. I would, I would like to start by, based on the way the agenda works, we'll have Tanya start with any.
Yeah, one second, Jared, sorry. So I have to close the hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Sorry, forgot about that. All right, back to Board of Health.
Thank you. So I don't have anything to add to it at this point, other than to listen to the suggestions. And based on it being first, we'll start with Tanya and let her talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I submitted a document to the Board back on April 1st that addresses several options for your consideration. I've talked in length, I've met with some of the residents as far as the chronic blighted areas that have been occurring in Freetown far before my arrival, which has just been for a few months here, and have followed through with your goal as far as trying to get a hold of that. The town of Freetown is in a unique situation where, one, there is no Board of Health, which it's, you know, how you look at it, it does cause a lot of cons in the area of the health agent. Puts a significant load on you as a Board of Health and Board of Selectmen. But the practice, the standard practice of sending out letters and having them kind of go what I call into the ethers a little bit, is challenging at best. It's what the standard is. We go there to the sites. We do the best we can as far as being in a legal situation. We can't do X and Y. But if the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health considered strengthening what you can already do per Chapter 111 in Mass General Law, and I've given you a really good example in that April 1 memo that you can read and pretty much take into consideration at a later time. But if you had a strong nuisance regulation at a local, at a local level, very similar to New Bedford, basically, you can get a start on taking care of these matters in a more efficient manner than what's happening now. What's happening now is the agent puts a letter out there and then the other priorities start to get going again. There's no real avenue to bring it forth from what I can see in the historic records. Usually, after a couple weeks, a standard operating procedure would be, okay, one Smith Ave, chronic issue, I talked to the chairman, I talked to the town administrator, and we go from there as far as bringing that situation right to the Board, whether it's the Board of Health or Board of Selectmen or what have you. Being a combined Board, it's a bit challenging because there's been a lot of direction about keeping things really short, very to the point, and then jockeying for position, so to speak, as other more pertinent issues arise with the town. Another aspect that could come before this that is non-regulatory would be to see the town administrator on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. Many, many municipalities go through this. The inspectional services come forward to the town administrator. We discuss the situations, we discuss our progress, we discuss what's happening. There is an acute situation, maybe council's brought in, or we go forward with several meetings. And the town administrator plays a very active role in seeing where we all are. That's something that has been very effective in my, you know, decades in different municipalities. But those three things in combination or in, by themselves will get things going and will give you regular updates. It'll keep Freetown like the finger on the pulse, so to speak, instead of the next priority, the next priority, the next priority, and then things just don't get done. Because some matters, as you know, need counsel. They've been going on for quite some time. It doesn't mean that due process doesn't start here. You have to start from day one. The other, the other and final note I'll say is that it's really effective to go out together as a team. There's some sites in Freetown that really do require a team. Many towns do that. And that has, that has a great effect. And there's one site in particular that there's been talk about going out as a team, but I'm not sure if that's happened yet.
Thank you. I have a quick question, Tanya. Do you see other towns having a specific person who their only job is enforcement of these type of items? And now is, is that not common?
I haven't seen that.
Okay.
Every, every entity in the town hall has its own quote unquote enforcement or set of rules that they go by, or set of laws. I have mine. They're very strong. Jeff has his, you know, assessors, zoning, everybody has their own set. And then collectively, the town administrator usually has that umbrella and guides, guides the ship, so to speak.
Okay, so I was just wondering, you know, if, you know, if that's something we should look into, right? Is having someone like, because as you mentioned before, you know, once you get into the flow of things and there's, there's a lot of different things going on and it comes to, you know, issuing permits and all kinds of other stuff. And like, if you had someone who specifically, their only job was to go after and just chase these things down constantly, you know?
But this is part of, as a public servant, that's our job.
Yeah.
And so for me, sometimes if the departments grow, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, because I know that's another sensitive subject, but as a sole agent or a sole building inspector or a sole whomever, assessor, we do have to juggle those matters. But that also brings into play, if we were to go in and have updates with our town administrator, that priority can also be shared as far as, hey, look, guys, we really, I really need you to take care of this matter. This is a priority, you know, we can't continue to go forward. And then bringing that to the Board of Health, saying, bringing the owners in on a regular basis, that does wonders. And we don't really, I haven't seen that avenue come into play, like bringing in Mr. and Mrs. Smith from Smith Road and bringing them into a public forum and talking with them. Because blighted neighborhoods, a lot of people don't want to come forward.
Yep.
It also shows the legal avenue of due process. The letter, two weeks, the Board of Health on the agenda. Administration is involved and knowledgeable. And then there, there's, everybody is understanding. So there's really not just one person.
Gotcha.
So I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Tanya. One of the things that I definitely heard loud and clear is the need to basically increase penalties on these people, right? And in different avenues of making sure that we can take care of this stuff so that it hopefully will take care of the issue we currently have, but also hopefully lessen the amount of issues going forward. So I obviously appreciate the advice, because you're the expert in this, not me. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I will say that fines are not very effective. Just, I just want to make sure that I understand you correctly, is that typically fines help, but they usually, more involvement with the Board of Health has a much better effect than fines.
Yeah, I'm sorry if it came across that way. Not just fines, not just fines, but more so, yeah, the, the constant pursuit on the people to make sure that things happen.
Yes.
To really keep on them. And unfortunately, some people don't care how many people are at their doorstep or what, and it will be a monetary issue. But, so maybe it's, it's a combination of both. Maybe it's increasing the fines as well as the push from the Board of Health or whatever party is needed in order to make it happen.
A strong local regulation will do wonders. It's a nuisance regulation. They're all over the Commonwealth. They're very common. Freetown is as the least amount of regulations in comparison to the majority of your, of your neighbors that I've seen. And it doesn't mean that anything is going to happen across the board. It's just that it allows you access to the property and to bring forth the situation. And sometimes one meeting can take care of a lot of other issues and stop that blight from happening, because those are chronic situations.
Yeah, and so just to be clear, so that would be something that probably has to go to a town meeting to get approved, you know, put into work. It's like, would it be a bylaw, technically?
There are some, yeah, there are some regulations, and you'll see that can be verified by council. But depending on, some needs town meeting and some don't. With the Board of Health, a unique situation that is different than other under Chapter 111. That's a very, very strong law. And many boys of health don't understand how strong it is.
I'll have to look that up. All right, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tanya. I appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, so now, kind of the same thing. I really don't have a ton more to add. So now I can turn it over for the same thing, the building. Jeff, if you want to speak on it at all?
All right, I've been dealing with a number of violations for cars. Going through the list, it basically is those extra unregistered vehicles that I'm dealing with. The first one that I have been dealing with where two weeks ago, I sent out a $150 fine. As far as I know, he hasn't paid that yet. But the next step on him is to turn it over to town council. He's, he's basically playing a game with us. It's cheaper for him to be paying the fines than it is for him to get a property and do a business storage for that. That was probably four or five years prior to me. And going through the records, there was only one fine given out prior. I have issued two, two fines. The last time, he came down soon as he got it and paid it. But I'm looking at it, he's trying to play the system, and it's easier for him to pay the fines than it is to get something. Next one would be 92 Chase with the unregistered vehicles amongst other things that are there. Tanya's been dealing with that as well. 92 Chase, a year ago, I gave out a fine. They started to clean it up and then they stopped. It started to get worse this past November. And just last week, I gave him a $150 fine, another one. And she actually came down to pay it today. And that property there, it doesn't look like it, but, but they've taken out five vehicles in that week. So it is working. That one there was one of the ones that the selectmen gave the approval to go to town council. As much as I don't want to see that, it's just going to cost the town more money, but the property has to be cleaned up. I'm gonna, I gave her two weeks to do, and then at that point, I'll give her another fine. And we'll give her the two weeks to see if she's constantly cleaning up. If, if that's the route, that's going to resolve a lot of issues that we have with the violations. If it seems like it's just stopped, then I would turn it over to town council at that point. I'm dealing with a fence, the fence viewer on 6 Paul Ave. She, this lady complained about the backdoor neighbor putting up some traps along the tree line. And yes, it, that to me was a spite fence. I did talk to that neighbor. He removed it. And then he put up, he asked me, well, can I put a privacy fence up? I said, yes, you can, but you can't do taps on her side. They're going to be blowing into her yard and making noise. He did do a privacy fence and realized that they're still seeing through, so he put taps on his side, which by the fence viewer law, law that they have throughout the state, that is acceptable. Now, at this point, it's, it's basically a civil matter. She's tit for tat, you know, for everything that's going on. He put no trespassing signs up along the tree line. I think what they're going to have to do is get a land surveyor. I can't determine any boundary lines. I don't have the authority to do that. But it's, one neighbor's complaining that they're, the younger ones are having parties and, and so on. I have talked to them. The other neigh, the first neighbor that was in the violation of a spite fence said that, you know, one of the little kids was running behind the shed and, and he told me that. I mentioned something to the, the younger couple. They, she kept saying, I've never had kids over there. And a minute later, she goes, oh, well, there was a little kid and she was behind the fence. And so, you know, I, at first, they're not telling the, the full story. Not that I, you know, it's not really my responsibility to do that, but the way it's running now, you know, she wants to put signs facing his yard. And I said, as long as it's on your own property. And so at this point, it's, it's more of a civil matter. The next one on the list would be 106 Chipaway with all the vehicles. And apparently, there's a trailer out there. I haven't seen any evidence of someone living there, but that would be Board of Health to rectify that issue. All the vehicles, I have pictures of that. And again, I'm dealing with these other, you know, the two major ones. That will be not the next one on the list, but shortly after that. Again, one person dealing with that, dealing with inspections, dealing with permits, dealing with building facilities, dealing, you know, it's just, it's a lot for one person. Time-wise building facilities, not, you know, it's basically three hours a day that I have to deal with things. So again, it's kind of gives me a shorthanded hand on this whole deal. But next one would be 109 Chase Road. That's pretty much a new complaint that just came in within the last three weeks. That one there, they're running a business and some cars. I have told the person that did call in about that, that that is on, one of the top on the, on the list. We're trying to clean up Chase Road, number. So I do have to send something out for that. I'm going to say, I'm going to try to get it done at the end of this week, if not next week. One other.
So is that, is that a legal business, like a, they have a business license, or is it just?
They don't have a business license at that. It was just a garage. Now they turned it into a shop. They have 11 cars, unregistered vehicles there. And there are people going there and having their, their cars, their vehicles worked on. From the person that complained, he said there were campers out back. I didn't, I haven't seen any evidence of that yet. I might talk to him to see if I can go to his backyard and look over to see if I see something. If that's the case, that, that part would be with Board of Health. Everything else, you know, I would deal with, with the business and the unregistered vehicles. One is 4 Quanapog. That there, there's an extra house on the property, which is not allowed. And that person has converted a, a storage garage into a house. I don't know how he's tied into the system. Again, that would be, he would have to show proof of how he turned that, you know, tied that into the septic system, and that would be Board of Health. So we're kind of, it's kind of teaming up, like Tanya said. It is teaming up to address a lot of these complaints. But, you know, my issue is that the use, he's, he's using it for residential when it's not allowed through zoning, a second dwelling on a property. And the last one that I have here is Zero Lock Lane. That prior, for me getting in there, in here, it was, it's been addressed before by a phone call, talking to the owner. That phone call, they said, yeah, come on the property, you can take it. Well, because it wasn't in writing, he charged us with trespassing. So that one there would be, last year, when Derek was here, Derek and myself, Derek threw out the letter and had both of us on it. He did clean up two cars, or three cars at that point, but hasn't done anything else. It's, we kind of have the neighbor across the street just keeping us posted on if there's any more coming in or if there's any progress with that. She hasn't really said anything, but again, I don't, I don't feel that we should wait for her to, to complain again. That one there, maybe I might need the approval to go to town council on that one. That wasn't one of the three that we originally addressed before.
Yeah, so that's actually like right near my house. I walk my dog by there a lot, so I'm pretty sure there's no one. And it looks like there's some, like, potentially, you know, cars or old boats or stuff like, touching the, getting into the river there. So I don't know, gives us a little more authority, because it seems like a real environmental issue.
Through conservation, too.
Yeah, so that's just something, you know, it's weird, it's a tiny, it's a very small lot, but there's a ton of stuff on it. It looks like the cleanup effort wouldn't be that extreme, but it just seems to be, I know, they've kind of, they started at one point, they stopped cleaning it up, and then brought more stuff there, and it's kind of, you know, so.
Yeah, from what I've heard, that the lady across the street, the family that moved Yeah, from what I heard, that the lady across the street, the family that moved across the street, most of those boats, cars were on that property, and when they sold it, they had to move it and they moved it across the street. So that's what kinda clogged that up itself.
That makes sense.
But that one there, if we, to go down there, we gotta be careful not to go on to the property. I don't know you know, who's watching to see what we do. You know, somebody turned around and backed in, and they thought it was us going down there taking pictures, uh which it wasn't at that point, um you know, they said it was a car, and at the time I had the truck. Um and C O A had the vehicle. But it it's that one there, we do have to be careful on how we handle it and how we go down to, you know, take pictures and, you know, get documentation. Um we have to get things in writing from him, because a phone call, you know, shot us in the foot.
Gotcha.
There's been no activity on Lark Lane at all, there's been no cleanup. The, you know, the the person that's been in contact with Jeff and Derek prior to, we've had a long conversation. Um and um there has been no activity there at all, doesn't look, I mean, pro or con. And um there is quite a bit that you can get, as Jeff well knows, from the road. Um as far as video and and pictures, and you can walk on the on the road and almost get the waterfront area as well, but every everything there is quite aged and and very, you know, very old, and there's been nothing happening there, it's an owner issue, as as Jeff well knows as as well, I'm not saying anything new. But it's tracking down whoever the owner is right now, that's the, that's the key issue.
Yeah, they don't live in town, right, they live in, yeah.
No, no, the town also can consider putting on, if the town ever wanted to provide, you know, put a lien on a property, sometimes this happens. You have a cleanup effort and and I I may disagree respectfully, Trevor, that that these types of cleanups are expensive, there's a large boat there, I mean, as you know,
No, I
is cheap to remove, that's why
I I should have said that, yeah, you're you're correct, it's it's, there's a lot of stuff just in a, I guess the the size of lot is smaller than maybe the other problem.
Material, and that's, that's the the blighted, why I kinda use that term in Free Town, is that it's expensive to get rid of product, any contractor knows that, um people know that, so they use they use property to dispose and just kinda set it and forget it, so to speak.
Yeah.
And the town's left to deal with that.
Yep.
I I also appreciate the advice from you as well, um. My question is, you're, you know, one of the things you brought up a couple of times is about the fines. Um this is a question, I guess, for both you and Tanya, um to educate me on is the um dollar amount, I'm assuming that we're issuing the fines orders preset. Is there also a um frequency at which we issue, we're issuing the fines? And you know, to Tanya's point, fines on everything, cuz some people are just paying, especially or what you were talking about with the business owner who has a piece of property, and it's cheaper for him to store the cars. They'll gladly pay the fines, it's still cheaper than the alternative, but you know, I'm just curious as to what, how and why we're issuing fines and and to see if you think it's actually working at all.
I, when I was in Plymouth, um I was the one that would have to go to court, talk to the magistrate, talk to the judge about the violations and the fines. There, when we issue a fine, it does bring up a issue with a judge. Um yes, our bylaw says that we could issue a fine every single day. Uh I've had two magistrates and a judge tell me that if I did that, they would just throw that out saying we're harassing them. So I'm trying to, and I've had a uh two magistrates say, we give them enough time that it does, you know, we're we're trying to work with them, we're giving them time, and they're not responding. A judge sees that with the time, and the decision is is ninety percent of the time, it goes for the town, and they issue a cleanup. And at that point, then, once it's, once they start issuing that, they issue a a warrant and uh, which I've seen that a couple of times where you know, within two weeks, everything's cleaned up, uh after the warrant's been issued. I don't again, I don't wanna lose any foothold that the town can have. You know, with harassment, uh I don't, I don't wanna, I've experienced that with with Plymouth on that. And I, like I said, the the magistrates, you know, once we go to a hearing like that, the magistrates basically take our side when they see that we're giving them time, we're not harassing them, we're not, you know, and and they they believe us a lot more. One that I did sit in on uh where, you know, they they did that, and it was like, we never gave them enough time. And they basically cited, you know, um went with the defendant. You know, that that we were, the town was harassing them. And that's one thing that I try to, and I've always remembered that, and I use that from my experience. Um some people say, yeah, I don't know about that, well, it has worked. Um given someone a fine, there was an issue where somebody on, was it Locust Street? Um selling cars, they didn't have a business uh permit. I issued them the first fine, they basically stopped, took things off the website. And then they slowly came back in, I issued another fine for a hundred and a hundred dollars. We we go fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, and a hundred and fifty dollars. Um that hundred dollar one basically made them stop, they haven't done anything since, so with my part, I I look at that, that works as well. Um but again, I think the time thing is 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 the biggest issue um that kinda works with us.
I appreciate it, I I I just want some clarification on that, so that that was it, so I I do appreciate that.
Yeah. So, and that's uh that's all the ones that are really pressing us right now. Again, Lock Lane, that might be something that, you know, send it, send one more letter out before we get counsel, because that letter will also give them fuel to go to court.
Yep, that makes sense to me. So all right, so should should we make a motion to kinda uh for Lark Lane to give you permission to go to council with us now, would that be helpful?
Yes, I I'll I'll um draw up a letter and send that out. And we'll see what type, what type of response, and if there's no response, or or you know, just if he responds to it and doesn't do anything, obviously, you know, we'll go to, I would like to be able to get a hold of council and and uh have them take that.
All right.
So do I have to make the motion?
Yeah, if you entertain the motion,
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So, yes, I'll I'll make that motion uh to give Jeff uh the ability to write the letter and and go to council uh regarding Zero Lark Lane. Just second it.
Also, what's up?
Just second it, working on the cheese here, guys, uh are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, anything else from Jeff, Tanya, you guys good?
All set.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much, appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Nice little dog cameo there.
Yeah, oh, every time I sit here.
I know, that's why I keep going on and off camera, it's because I got my dog and my parents' dog here. They know if they harass me while I'm at a meeting, I'll just immediately give them a treat, so.
All right, well, thank you very much, and we'll talk later.
Have a good one.
Okay, thanks, bye bye.
Okay, so now we will uh go through the rest of the agenda items uh in order. Except for number nine, which we've striped, and that's about it. All right, so next we have, so I will entertain a motion uh to approve the meeting minutes from uh April sixth and April fourteenth, the selectmen onboarding. Uh I'm sorry, I'll make which approve the minutes with it, April sixth and April fourteenth. Yes, the selectmen onboarding and, sorry, I'm just reading this all screwed up. So let me try this one more time, guys. Approve the meeting minutes for April sixth and April fourteenth. So I have a motion. Jared, you're you're uh you're muted.
Sorry, I'll second that, yes.
Are you, so I think the way it's gonna work, right? All uh you
You'll make the motion, I'll entertain it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just say motion made, when you wanna make, and then and then I'm gonna second it.
Okay.
Just, it's weird when we only have two people.
Okay, yeah, sorry, so uh motion?
Motion made?
Motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, all right, next we have um approval for the lease schedule for the uh fiscal year twenty-two lease of two police cruisers, that funding was approved at the annual town meeting. So I will make a motion to, or sorry, I'll entertain a motion to approve these leases.
Motion, yeah.
All right, um I'll second it, any discussion on this? Peter, thank you for, I could see in your eyes, I was forgetting something. So no, no discussion, all right, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, all right, so next, I will um entertain a motion to accept a gift of tangible property, donation of the K nine nutritional items by the Free Town Police K nine Foundation, Inc.
Motion.
I I'll second it, uh any discussion on this? All right, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, number eight, we have the review finalized and approved warrants. So Jared, have you uh had the opportunity to read through the warrants?
Yes.
All right, I have as well, uh for everyone else in town, these these have been posted or will be posted once we approve them?
It will be.
Well, okay, so rather than going through all of them, um I think that we're good with just make a motion now, and then uh everyone can see those um on our website. So I'll entertain a motion to final, uh review finalize and approve the town uh warrant, town meeting warrants.
Motion.
Uh I'll second it, on uh any discussion on this?
Yeah, Trevor, it looks, I think you should have a little specificity, you should say the special town meeting warrant for Monday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and the annual town meeting warrant for June seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Could you have two different warrants, and you wanna specify?
All right, uh yes, so I'll restart that, so I'll entertain a motion to appro- approve the um the the special town meeting warrant, as well as the annual town meeting warrant, both taking place on uh June sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Seven.
Seven.
What is it?
June seventh.
I was one day off, that's my dad's birthday is June sixth.
Motion.
I'll second that, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so now we're skipping down to agenda item ten. So this is now a discussion on the municipal solid waste and recycling um RFP bids received. So I guess let's start this conversation.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually put it on the, for the next meeting to approve, he had three, um responses, Republic Services, Borges Brothers, and Easy Disposal. Um you have a memo in your um packet from Tim, uh Nakantashia Executive Assistant at back of the time, listing all the different options and the price points they came in at. You also received a memo from my office showing some different uh items to consider, like where the recycling's gonna go, what the uh diesel cash um baseline prices are and different, so why don't you take a moment and uh look at those uh for next week? And then you can decide on how you wanna handle or how you wanna award that um contract. Right now, Republic Services has the lowest one, but if you take a look at the diesel cash price baseline and the fuel adjustment, um that distance strengths, so you may wanna take a look at Borges at the same time, e- easy disposal seems uh pretty outplayed, they're the only ones that also um bid uh the automated service. Um but that doesn't really work in some parts of the community, that's why it's so expensive. So the other two, uh Borges and Republic both had manual systems. Basically, all of them are donating, all of them are bringing, well, one of them said they bring in fifteen trucks, which I think is a typo. They're all gonna have three to five trucks, or two to three trucks for Borges, four to five trucks for Republic that will serve the community. So, and they all agreed to all the other terms and conditions that we had in the RFP. So I think it's something you need to read through, and uh if you have any questions, ask me, or we can, if you don't have the answers, we'll get them from the uh applicants at this time.
Yeah, and and to be clear, so the decision we make here isn't, it doesn't have to be purely financial, right, um it is
The best qualification, most advantage qualifications for the community.
Yeah.
Price is only a factor, uh level of service, do we had complaints in the past? Um there are like, I bring up the diesel, uh cuz it's just in my mind, one of them was two sixty-four versus three oh two, so that's pretty big jump between the two.
Yeah.
So all of those factors come in.
Absolutely. All right, so um I guess we'll just kinda move on from that, there's no really decision to be made tonight on that.
Correct, but I I wanna put that on for the agenda of the next meeting.
Yeah, I think I'm totally, totally on board with that, I think it's something we gotta get sorted out. Um I also wanna, you know, we should maybe for the agenda for next week, or at least talk about potential long-term solutions for where we bring our trash. Um with Crepo Hill going out of commission in twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
Um I'd like to, you know, get ahead of that, so.
Okay, we actually did send out a lot of our requests to CMOS, we haven't heard back from them yet. I know we have the uh from Crepo Hill, a three or five year, I think we're looking at three year.
Yeah.
We haven't signed it yet, hasn't run out, but uh
Yeah. I'm just, I what I guess, yeah, I'd like to look, you know, thinking the next ten years ahead, you know, that's kinda where where I'd like to see uh is just, I know there's, I think there's been a lot more waste with COVID, and um that twenty twenty-seven timeline for Crepo Hill makes me nervous, and I don't wanna be in a situation where we have nowhere to bring our trash.
You were free, you were a member of uh CMOS back in the day, a founding member.
Yeah.
Town left essentially cuz of cost. Um I know they, we've reached out to them before, and we'll hear back, so I'm not saying it's a no, I'm just, we haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay, great, yeah, so look forward to, you know, see what they say, may maybe if they don't respond to our our email, our letter, maybe just give someone, give them a call or something, that'd be great, just, you know, just so we have all the information on the table before I make a decision on that. Okay, great, so next we have item eleven, which is um uh approving changes for the industrial communications for uh the police station, so it's two change orders. The first, sorry, go Peter?
No, correct, I'm sorry.
Yep, so change order one is amount of four thousand ninety dollars uh for modifications of the ice bridge post near the base of the retaining wall. And then change order two is for the amount of five thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the installation of an antenna. Uh so I will entertain a motion to approve both of these change orders.
Motion.
I'll second it, uh any discussion on this?
Had a brief conversation with the police, it seems to be needed uh at the time for uh an approved communications, thank you.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I I know that they've struggled for a long time with all sorts of different communications, so I think this is welcomed. Um all right, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, so next we have ambulance abatements uh for March twenty twenty-one. So the ambulance abatements is the amount of a hundred thousand, one hundred, one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight for the abatement, and then the write-off of eight thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents totaling one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um I will entertain a motion to approve the write-off and abatement.
Motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion on this?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, so moving on, we have the discussion on quotes for the town meeting mailers. I know George, wish he was here. I should have mentioned the top of the meeting, George is not joining us tonight. Over there, is that right? But so, yeah, Peter, do you want to speak to a little bit about these quotes?
I'm actually gonna delegate this off to Luann, because she did the homework on it.
All right, Luann.
All right, so I reached out to two local companies, Moonlight Design Copy and Print and KLA Printing and Graphic Services. So they're both in a sonnet and both have experience with doing this type of mass mailing through the postal service and how it has to be bundled and done accordingly. They can also provide design services for it, so they can design, print, collate it, take it off to the post office and everything. So what we would be looking to do is to have one selectman that would be interested in taking that on as a project for content. And I'd be happy to work with them on that. We have quotes that are similar, and I mean, there's one that's one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars for the two-sided postcard for Moonlight Design and KLA comes in for the same size postcard at fifteen thirty-four. So they are very, very similar and that includes your postage and everything, your design fees and everything.
All right, great. Sorry, go on. Good, so, so I'll entertain a motion to assign George from the Boris Luckman, mostly because he's not here. To make this, to, to work with this company and also to make the final decision on which company we go with.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this?
I, I think it's just good to note that we're actually doing the postcards and they're about twenty cents each, so it's a pretty inexpensive way to kind of reach everyone. We actually gonna, I believe there's two postal codes in town and that's how we, they get assigned.
Awesome. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, next we have award the contract for the sand with the winter sand for Cape Cod aggregates corp. So I'm trying to pull this up real quick. These packets are. Do you know what pages is on?
Are you looking for the names of them?
So it's, it's just a worry. Is this something we went out for bid for, or is it just assigning them? Cape Cod aggregate, they're the company, right?
They did. They actually went out, the highway department went out to bid and got this call.
And so this is a recommendation from the highway department?
Correct.
All right, great. So, um, yeah, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to award the contract to Cape Cod aggregate corp for fiscal twenty-two winter sand.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Just so you know, there were actually three companies that actually were contacted and bid on the, on the project.
All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. All right, now we have a discussion on the IT support for the town. So, and also potentially we might be selecting a new IT support company. Peter, do you want to speak to this a little bit?
You're on mute, Peter.
I hit it by accident, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's something I promoted my first got here. I just wanted a little more depth in the IT services that we have. And we have a one-man shop right now and I was concerned that sometimes we didn't have the coverage we wanted and sometimes the response time was a little bit different than I wanted. So I asked folks to take a look at that, Luann and Tim McIntosh actually went out, contacted three companies, got some quotes and bids on that. Right now, we pay about eighty-five dollars an hour. Without a retainer, the new company would be about a hundred bucks an hour without a retainer. They have a five-man shop, they serve in the area and they share with other municipalities. So they're familiar, so they're familiar with municipal work. So I feel a little more comfortable working with them. And that's something I would bring into the town. I've had discussions with the police chief, fire chief, I haven't had discussions with the library. I know the police chief's a little reserved about it, but we'll talk to him when he gets back. Fire chief seemed to be okay, but I would like to put a new service in town.
Okay, is, is that a Green River?
Uh, New Speck?
Metro Spec.
Metro Spec, excuse me.
Metro Spec? Um, okay, so I will, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and assign this contract to Metro Spec. Can't find it.
Yeah, it's Metro Spec and we're asking for start date, we would start after you vote, but no later than May first.
Right, so I'll entertain a motion to assign this contract to Retrospec, Metro Spec. No later, starting the contract no later than June first, twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
All right, second that. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, so we have already taken care of agenda items, actually. So I guess discussion on, on the council on aging would be number sixteen. It was struck from the, you know, copy here, but I think we can talk about it real quick.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, it's more of an update. I know we had the initial meeting with Compass and Andy, his firm doing the work. It's not completed yet. So, and I've had a couple of calls from a couple of folks who are very interested in this project, citizens. So my thought was let Andy finish his work. I think it, I know he's still gonna have some more discussions with the library folks. And I believe maybe more with the CY. So let him finish his work. Then we probably, I, I'd still recommending that the building committee would be the oversight committee on this project to take a look at that. So those are my recommendations to go forward. People wanted to know where we are on that, so I want, like I said, I want Andy to finish and then we can push it toward the building committee and under chapter one forty-nine, they would, once we get the concept done, we would actually put out for design services on a particular project.
Yep, and yeah. It's a crazy time to try to build right now, which I've been having a lot of conversations about this with a lot of people, just kind of, it's, you know, as.
We're not gonna be bringing nails quickly, because you've got to have a design done. Right now, Andy's doing his research, fact-finding. And I'll come up with a conceptual design that people kind of like or like, and then we'll go for design services. And you know, architects, as efficient as they are, they take their time. So you're probably not looking till next year anyhow.
All right, great. Okay, I think now we will move on to personnel board. I'll take that safe with George's absence. So first, we have the acknowledgement of the resignation of Tim Dacey, Cemetery Section Sexton effective three twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. So just a question here, Peter, is this such, do I have to make a motion to accept it or am I just acknowledging?
We're just acknowledging. We actually had this discussion with a legal counsel and we had this discussion with the town clerk. It's in the past, it was, the board was accepted and the town clerk was accepted. In Massachusetts legally, once the town clerk gets the resignation, it's accepted by the town. So what we're trying to do, it's just you acknowledge to the board, these are the folks that resigned or have left and make you aware of that. So we're asking for acknowledgement of the, of the positions and then the appointments would be just as normal.
Okay.
We'll just, just clear up the process, that's all.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. So next, the acknowledgement of resignation of Tanya Denal, Board of Health Agent, effective four twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on, we have the appointment. So appointment of Owen Borges at Cemetery Sexton, effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. So now I will entertain a motion, but.
Well, we have an issue with.
Okay.
So we've had a discussion with the cemetery commissioners. The individual is under eighteen. That triggers certain requirements in Massachusetts to have that done, work done. And a quarry hasn't been done yet. So the discussion I had with the cemeteries is to hold up on that.
Okay.
Make sure we can clarify what we need to do with someone under eighteen.
Totally.
Operating machinery.
Yep, gotcha. All right, so we're gonna hold on that one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yep. So next we have appointment of Jeffrey Amorall, Eileen Lima, Lola Fattardo, Carlos Lobs, Lynn Fattardo, and Brian Miller to the Parks and Rec Committee, effective. So I'll entertain a motion to make this appointment effective today, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion on this?
I think we're planning on having our first meeting, or they're gonna have their first meeting on the twenty-seventh of this, this month.
Yeah, that's something, if I'm invited, I would like to potentially.
Maybe Luann can do that. Maybe she can invite you.
All right, yeah. Just, I think that's a pretty exciting stuff and, you know, like to see what, where they're, where they're heading with this. I think it's a real quality of life type stuff that can actually impact, you know, people in town in a positive way.
I agree.
I know, so if I don't have any other meetings already lined up, yeah, and maybe, maybe Luann can give me an invite there.
Done.
All right. Okay, so moving on to twenty-three. We have appointment, so I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Nicole Divigan to the Building Committee effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes.
I do believe that you have to go back to the part that we spoke, I don't think we voted.
I was just thinking the same thing. I got carried away talking and I forgot to do that. So let's just to cover our bases here. So I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Jeffrey Amorall, Eileen Lima, Lola Fattardo, Carlos Lobs, Lynn Fattardo, and Brian Miller to the Parks and Recreation Committee, effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Second that. We already had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, sorry about that, guys. It's been a long day. Um, I'm just gonna make sure I have the right.
I have the names in front of me for the next one, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think I should have them right. Okay, yeah, I, I got them for the, for the tax. The Tax Increment Finance Financing Board?
Correct.
Am I pronouncing that right? Tax increment?
Yep.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion for the following appointments to the Tax Increment Finance Board. Michael Mata, Trevor Matthews, myself, Gary Martin, Kevin Desmaris, Peter Jankowski, and Jessica Thomas.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this? Oh, sorry, let me clarify my motion. It's effective May first, twenty twenty-one and expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. All right, next. Uh, I will entertain a motion for the appointment of Lola Fattardo as a clerk eight slash aide for the Council on Aging effective April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Second that. Any discussion?
Uh, this is that actually that CARES position, that was funded through the CARES Act and it's gonna help the seniors with mostly food delivery and any, anything related to COVID.
Yep, and so, and this is being funded by that CARES Act and then it will stop once that money is no.
Or you, or you folks decide to, in the program.
Okay, all right, great. Well, we're happy to have her here. So, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. All right, I think this might be another one with some more than one names. All right, got it. So next we have the appointments for the participants for the Senior Work Off Program. So I will entertain a motion to make the following appointments to the Senior Work Off Program, effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Robert Pilling, Paula Charette, Melody Cardoza, Diane Scott, and Suzanne Simo.
Motion.
Uh, second that. Um, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. All right, getting towards the bottom here, guys. So next I will entertain a motion to set the pay rate for the boat slash boat ramp slash beach attendant to the minute, the state minimum wage of thirteen fifty per an hour.
Motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion on this?
No, it's good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, now we have the to approve the town Free Towns quarry policy. And so I know Peter and I spoke about this earlier, so pretty much we asked council to, to write this up a long time ago and it never ended up getting approved. So it's just kind of clarifying what are, you know, how we go about our quarry policy. Peter want to add anything to that?
No, it was, it was updated in two thousand nineteen and it just fell through the cracks somehow, so. Continued policy, thank you.
Yep. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Town or Free Towns quarry policy.
Motion.
Second it. Any discussion? All right.
What's the date of the policy? You just want to see the date of the policy.
Date of the policy. Right here. Yeah, so as of today. So, yeah, so let me start it over. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Town or Free Towns Quarry Policy, effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
I'll second it. I don't think we have any more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. All right, and twenty-ninth, final agenda item. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to approve the posting for the Board of Health Agent position. That's pretty straightforward.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this?
Uh, we're posting it on the MMA, we're posting on our website, we're gonna do the local paper. We're using the same pay raise or the same pay rage that we advertised that the board approved, but two months ago or three months ago when they started the first process, so that hasn't changed. And the job description is the same too.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews.
Yes. Okay, so old business, phone system upgrade. Uh, we talked IT replacement plan, town beach, any, anything on that? Old business, anyone wants to talk about?
Well, regarding the town beach and the boat ramp, that's, I mean, it's in our office right now. But that's something we hopefully will be incorporated with the Parks and Rec Division Department. So right now, Luann has been working with the health agent on getting that open and making sure we have other COVID advertising and what have you. So we're doing that, but the long-term goal is to have the park and rucks involved in that and oversee that, so.
All right.
That's, that's our plan.
Yeah. Luann, I also want a dog park.
Okay. I bet Larry does, right?
Larry really wants one.
Isn't there a state park like up the street, like that's massive?
Yeah, but you know, you need to have dog friends, you know?
I guess.
Yeah, Larry's getting lonely.
I'm sure there's a squirrel out there or something.
He chases all the squirrels. All right, so I will now entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'll second that, uh, any discussion before we leave?
That's good, thank you.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Alright, guys, good night.
Yeah, we'll go, thank you.
Talk to you soon, bye-bye.